My folder was thin. I didn't get my.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
I'm now going to call Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, meeting of Norfolk County Commissioners to order. Ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag.
The United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, which stands one minute under
Please remain standing for one minute. I have a sad duty. I want to ask your indulgence today to join with me in dedicating today's meeting to Brian Cummins, who is a full-time employee of Norfolk County. He's a nine-year employee in the maintenance staff. And he passed away this weekend, this past weekend in Wamouth with his family. So I want to dedicate this meeting to Brian. He has an excellent record with us. He had previous public service in another agency, but in the nine years he was with us, he was an exemplary employee. So join me for one moment in dedicating this meeting to Brian Cummins. Thank you very much. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Pinker issued an audit suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 38, Section 20. That auto was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On July 17th, 2022, by the original action legislature, that that auto was extended till March 31st, 2023, and I believe in under reports today from Director Mullin, we might get a moment or two to talk about what has recently passed.
We're waiting. It has not passed yet. We're waiting for the governor to sign the extension.
We're going right to the deadline, which is fine.
That's right.
Not surprising. This meeting is called to order. Thank you. Roll call. Commissioner Stady.
I am present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. Number three minutes, the open session meeting of March 22 for approval.
Motion.
I have to stand.
Okay. Motion. And I'll have to second it of the minutes of the open session meeting of March 22, 2003 for approval. All in favor? Aye. That's Commissioner Shea and Collins, too. Number four appointments, we have none. Number five, public comment. Every year, every meeting, we have a budget item, a budget item, an agenda item for the public to make any comments, anyone out there in Zoom land or anyone who comes in person to see us. And I want to ask Director Crown if anyone has contracted him relative to public comment.
Ah, no, sir.
Okay, last call for public comment. Okay, we're going to go on to number six, which is all business. We have none. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration. I believe we have four, two. I'm sorry, we have, we have four, one. Being the aforementioned death of Brian Cummins of Waymouth, who was a second shift custodian and had been with us for just nine years. So we already took care of Brian. It was a sad duty we have, but we dedicate this meeting to Brian. The next three, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, for you, move the effect Wallace and notice a contingency employment for Paul and Morgan of Quincy as grounds crew at the rate stated effective 3/29/23. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
At the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, we have two contingency employments. One is a motion for Jake Collantione of Dedham at the rate stated for a student worker effective 3/30/23. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The second one is notice contingency appointment, appointment for Brady Collarin of Whitman, Mass. For the rate stated and effective 3/30/23. So moved.
Second. Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
You know, in, 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 in me, thinking more about Brian Cummins, I believe this is on the agenda because and thank God we don't have a lot of these. We should take a vote. So if you could go back to.
She want to go back to that?
Yeah, just to put it on the record, solidify it. Thank you.
For the record, it was sadness. We noticed for the maintenance, we have a notice were deceased for Brian Cummins of Wamouth, Mass. He was, he served as custodian for the rate stated and that it noticed was affected 3/19/23.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote again. We don't have, rightfully so, we don't, we'll be around. Thank you.
I don't think I ever saw it before in my short time here. I don't think I have, but hopefully we won't see that for a long time. Warrantless.
Number eight.
Mr. Chairman, would you have permission for me to move first one, item 23-39 payroll of the county? I move $146,184.13. So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
A second item, Mr. Chairman, 03-05-23, expense of the county, $552,322.89. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye. And the last item, third item, I should say, 23-09B, expenses of school, $165,420.70. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
That takes care of that.
Number nine, report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commissioners will observe there are no warrant articles for ARPA awards today. However, that doesn't mean you won't be busy next week. There are six ARPA applications that are currently awaiting my review. They include three from the town of Canton, one from the town of Walpole, one from the town of Bellingham, plus the county of Norfolk's request for a study. There are at least three more that are in similar position, and I expect them to be released by powers installed within my review within the next few days. So next week you will have a minimum of six, but potentially more than up to nine. And some of them are relatively large awards, including one that's little me, Commissioner Shea from Quincy. So just getting you ready for signing off on a relatively large batch of ARPA applications. I'd like to briefly inform the commissioners that Bill Buckley sourced a letter that he has sent along to both Plymouth County Treasurer and myself, sent yesterday to President Biden from Speaker Kevin McCarthy. The letter is brief. And the Speaker of the House is appealing to the President to come to the table to discuss national financial concerns as he lays them out. But as we have been tracking the impact of some of the actions in Washington on the American Rescue Plan Act, this particular letter does point out that, and I'll read briefly an excerpt from the Speaker's letter. He adds, House Republicans are united in our view that the best way to reduce the national debt is to limit spending, save taxpayer money, and grow the economy, and prepare to sit down to discuss a variety of needs to do so that would achieve trillions of dollars in savings and economic growth, some of which you've even agreed to in the Biden debt limit talks of 2011. They include but are not limited to reducing excessive non-defense government spending to pre-inflationary levels and limit out-year growth, similar to what Joe Manchin has proposed. Number two, and this is the reason for me reading this to you, reclaiming unspent COVID funds that have sat dormant for over two years. So Speaker goes on to request the letter. These are the signals that we're watching, that we've been hearing about that could impact our ability to utilize the balance of unspent funds from COVID. We'll continue to keep the commissioners and the communities informed of any major developments, but this particular letter was a waypoint in that process, and we've shared it with Plymouth, so they're aware as well. But.
Are we going to share that with our communities and say, step up to the plate?
We, we, we will eventually use it as a lever. At this point, every community is involved in the process. They are aware the deadlines. I think at this point, that's a little premature, but over the next six months, as we get closer to the end of 2023, our internal process of having communities recognize that the clock is running out will be improvised on that message. But I suspect by then this issue will be in the national spotlight. It's clearly my words posturing to some extent, but you never know. So I thought I'd inform you. Other than that, there are no current ARPA applications to act upon today. Next week will be a good week, including three from Canton. They look good.
That's great.
Pretty good size awards.
Great.
Know any progress, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Any progress in terms of lining up presentations with some of those other towns?
Bill, Bill Buckley is on the call. Bill, can you give an update to the commissioners' recent conversations with at least one congressman, please?
Through Mr. Chairman, I did have the benefit of seeing Congressman Lynch not once, but twice in the last 10 days. And we had a series of productive conversations. We were talking about his schedule. What we think, knowing that we have the desire for both a ribbon cutting at the new playground in Quincy and to do some recognition of Quincy as well. What we're looking at doing is trying to group like two or three communities and look over to my map here and have sort of a morning of, say, Quincy, Braintree, Milton, to do two or three communities, large check presentations where we get, we gather folks in sort of a 10 o'clock, 10:30, 10:40, you know, 11 o'clock timeframe, so that you can do more press together, being cognizant of everyone's schedules, especially our federal elected officials who in Congressman Lynch's case, it kind of overtly asked to be part of our process. So again, you know, then we can kind of continue to move down the line, perhaps Dedham, Canton, Stoughton Day. And then, you know, maybe Walpole, Norwood, Westwood as well, and likewise doing ideally the same later in the spring, perhaps for the Franklin, Bellingham, Medway area as well. Trying to kind of loop those. I know Senator Markey has a strong interest, especially in the sort of center of the Randolph-Holbrook community because of the nature of their project being present for those as well. So that's where we are. But the congressman said it would probably, he is DC this week, but we could be looking at the second or third week of April for these. So that's where it is now. We're working with the staff, Joe White from Dedham. Good guy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
This includes opera for today, correct?
Correct.
Bit openings? We have none. Contract awards. We have no one today for a copy machine. It's for lease of copies for a period of three years for the treasurer's office. Nancy? We're a few minutes early, but.
This is another time.
You have a bid opening at 1:30. Right, jumping to number 12. That's just a lease award.
Well, there are any bid openings.
Okay, I'm on number 12, which is a contract award. We're going to have Nancy Rockwell. A purchasing agent to come on in and take care of that. Number 12. Nancy?
Hi, how are you all?
Go ahead. We're a few minutes early today, Nancy, but thank you.
Am I early?
No, no.
If you're already, we're ready. How's that?
Yes, it's just one contract. It's for the lease of a new copier for the treasurer's office. Three quotes were received, the lowest being Canon Solutions America. And it's a three-year lease in the amount of $192 per month for a total lease of $6,912.
Okay, any questions, any comments? I have one. Is this, does this come off of the state here or is this another?
Yes.
And we've done business with this company before.
Yes, our new machines at Canon.
And it's for three years.
Three years.
Does these machines last for three years generally?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we're ready then.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we award the the bid for the lease of the copier to Canon Solutions America for a photocopy for a period of three years at the rate of $192 a month for a period of three years for a total of $6,912. And this is to be used for the county treasurer's office.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award the lease to, award a contract for the lease of a copier for a period of three years to the treasurer's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you, Nancy. Number 12, number 13, in your packet, folks, it is the season. I got the request for civic rate of President's Golf Course for a one-time charity event in honor of Linda Goulet, a member of the Quincy Golf Course Women's Association. This is from Chris Fitzpatrick and Lynn Brilliant. Dear Mr. Shea, a very good friend of everyone's Linda Goulet, a longtime member of the Women's Association and many years a club champion, passed away last Sunday after a long battle with cancer. And writing to you to request a one-time charity event in honor of her to be awarded on the afternoon of June 25th at President's Golf Course will be a shotgun event. We are interested in applying for the civic rate, which would be greatly appreciated. We also discussed this with our pro Dana Smith. So this is, as I said, a request for a charitable tournament in honor of Linda Goulet, a former president of a women's association to golf course, also club champion. I didn't know that, but I'm sure.
There's not one of the same day, is there? Is that the firefighters or is that the next day?
Sometimes they are one and two. I mean, they are, they are at eight.
Last week's packet had something about the firefighters having one, but I know it was a different day.
That was June 20. I think it was in June. Quincy firefighters, we did last week.
Right.
Then this one. And I had gotten this letter last week, but it came on Monday, so I put it on for this. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, and I, I, I kind of liked them checking with Dana and Kyle first.
Yeah.
Because they, when they write the letter, they have some idea of where they want to be, because they want to manage it.
Sure. I'll move approval if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I think so.
With the charity rate for the outing in the memory of Linda Goulet. And that would be for the date of June 25th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote for Linda Goulet Day. Thank you. Number 14, request to observe education and sharing day in the county made by Rabbi Mendy Krensky of the Charlotte Jewish Center of Needham. In your packet, there's a email addressed to John, and it says, Dear Commissioners, on April 2nd, 2023, we'll be observing education and sharing day in the United States. This is a national tradition since 1978 in recognition of the monumental achievements of the Rabbi Menachem Shearnessen in righteous memory for the betterment of education for all Americans as a day to raise awareness and strengthen the moral education for our children. Each year on this date, marking Rebe's birth, a proclamation has been signed by the President of the United States, urging all Americans to utilize the day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure that our youth have the foundation necessary to live lives rich in purpose, fulfillment, and service to others. Proclaiming education and securing day in Norfolk County provides an excellent opportunity for Norfolk County to demonstrate its dedication to the moral education of all our children. We would be honored to have you wish of this proclamation, recognizing April 2nd as education and sharing day in Norfolk County. And I agree. Do you have any questions or comments, commissioners?
Copy the proclamation was given. Yeah, or read it, begin a motion or?
Sure, whatever.
It's, you know, mixed emotions. It led to some of the tragic events that took place, you know, last couple of days, and we're seeing it sadly more and more. It's a terrible thing. I had a friend of mine who's got a young child dropped off at kindergarten. She said, used to be just drop them off and worried that they get home with their books or their book bag, and now you worry. Honestly, God, I forgot to get home safe. Terrible thing, terrible thing. So anything we can do to promote education obviously is important. As an educator, I stand 100% behind it, but whatever we can do to also help those children be safe, we should be standing behind as well. So it's a great honor to make the motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll read it quickly as I can. Whereas the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and Norfolk County education obviously is a priority. Whereas in order to achieve its highest goal, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, form, and strengthen their moral character, to make a better life for themselves as individuals, and for society as a whole, imparting moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization, including the values known as the seven Noah laws, Noah laws. Whereas a global spiritual leader and leader and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Rabbi, the Rabbi, Rabbi Menachem Shearnessen, that's right, of righteous memory, stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas such an education can nurture the unity of diverse people through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness. Imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher an era of global peace, when there will be peace within your walls, serenity within your mansions. Psalm 122. Whereas education and sharing day is observed each year on the rabbi's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contribution toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And whereas April 2nd, 2023, will mark 121 years since it's Rebe's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and issues were launched throughout the world in tribute to this celebration. And whereas this year has an added significance as a year of Hacal? Hacal, I hope that's correct, a biblical event of unity, education, and spiritual growth emphasizing every person is crucial to affecting the world. Now, therefore, we, county commissioners, to hereby claim Sunday, April 2nd, 2023, to be education and sharing day in Norfolk County, and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all. Signed by our commissioners, Pete Collins, Chairman Shea, and myself.
Do you need a motion on this, Joe?
Yes.
I think so. A motion?
I'll move, yeah.
And if you would second it?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to declare April 2nd, 23, 2023 as education and sharing day as outlined in this proclamation that we're, the three of us are going to sign. This is for education and sharing day within the county as outlined above. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. I expect a full critique later on that.
Well, sir. Thank you. Number 15, vote on the fiscal '24 commissioners' budget. Commissioners before you, and is, is the presentation that Asha, that Director Crown is going to give to us. It's a package. It's outlined in red and says county director proposed budget, and then there is a, that's the actual budget. And then there is a presentation that I'm going to ask John to present. What I'd like to do is go through it. The devil is in the detail, the detail is with it, but in reviewing this this morning, John does his usual terrific job of bringing up all, all, all the salient points of our budget. I want to say that we're, I'm proud that we're so far keeping with our dates. And it is something I'd like to continue to do, but yet I don't want to make any real promise till we go through this and John highlights it. So your attention will be drawn to this docket, this docket number, no number, but it's dated March 29th. Nice picture of the courthouse. It says proposed fiscal year '24 budget presentation to Norfolk County Commissions and commissioners, and this is backed by another document, which is the full budget dated 3/29/23, which is everything we've done up to now. I'm going to turn it over to John and are we prepared to show this budget on Zoom with everything else?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Director Crown.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, commissioners. On January 12th, 2023, I sent out the guidelines for the FY '24 budget buildup. I'm happy to report today that I'm presenting a balanced budget for the commissioners' consideration for FY '24. This budget, which Bill will pull up in just a minute, has already received the input of the various department heads, and if you'll join me going through the slide deck, I'll summarize briefly what is included in the budget. I'm also happy to pull up any budgets specifically on the line, on, on, on Zoom and address them directly if you have any questions on my notes. Okay, so fair enough.
Right.
Very good. So page two, this presentation offers a balanced FY '24 county operating budget proposal. Number two, a proposed FY '24 capital budget, which is shown, shown at the back on slides 12 through 13. A proposed FY '24 use of ARPA grant funds, and then finally, an update in Quincy District Court and Capital Improvement Fund establishment. Again, so as Commissioner Shea just indicated, we are on a budget schedule currently, and as slide three shows you, we are progressing today for your vote on this respective budget, which will include a capital budget vote. Slide four indicates where we started. After the department heads had submitted their request, request, I should say, and rolled up against available revenue estimates known at the time, this budget was out of balance by $1,95,925. Excuse me. So it's work to do. Our FY '25, FY '24 budget goals on slide five include presenting a maintenance of effort level funded budget for this coming fiscal year, monitoring and adjusting fluctuating revenue, adjusting the structure to absorb increased actuarial based retirement costs, and present an opportunity to create a capital improvement fund alongside this operating budget. And finally, introducing a new scaled regional services program known as weights and measures. On slide number six, you'll see the beginning of three slides dealing with revenue. Revenue drives every budget, no different here in Norfolk County. You'll see that the projection for revenue getting into FY '24 is going up a little over a million dollars, a million $35,000 above FY '24. The largest areas for this budget, excuse me, this revenue increase come from the court rental increases. Obviously, the county tax assessment goes up two and a half percent. And we're also taking funds from the pre or forward funded FY '24 capital budget, which I'll talk about shortly. We're also using funds that were reimbursed to the county by the Commonwealth for CARES. So broadly, including some minor funds from the weights and measures program, which I'll describe in just a minute. That makes up the bundle of our projected FY '24 revenue picture. Taking a little bit of a deeper dive on the next two slides, there are some areas that I, you know, we have to keep an eye on. There are a few registry deeds, revenue sources that have been impacted by slowing housing market and administrative decisions, namely the transaction fee account. Last year was funded at 2.75 million as a result of recent trial balance data and projecting out into next fiscal year, I've lowered that projection down to $2.4 million or 14.5% drop in expected revenue. The deeds excise, this one is, I'm projecting a level fund of 4.550 into FY '24, same as FY '23. Both accounts are showing some stress associated with the market that I just described. We'll be keeping an eye on both, in fact, all of them, but mainly these two into FY '25 through the monthly trial balances. And if these need to be adjusted, we will notify respective parties immediately. And finally, the computer access fund, which I've reduced for FY '24 down another $100,000. I just want to note that at one point, that fund was FY '13, about 10 years ago, $861,000. We've seen a tremendous drop in that revenue source. And as indicated, one of the bright notes is our court rental fees have gone up to $4.3 million. The reason for the big jump is our, we get our reimbursements from the state in arrears, and we're just catching up now to the reimbursements they owe us for post-COVID activities. So we're realizing the benefit of that time and space. Slide number eight. As I mentioned, we had forward funded the FY '24 capital fund in September with our circles from last year. That million dollars has now been used in this budget in two different paths. The first, using $425,000 to fund, among other things, the retirement expenses that I think the commissioners may remember a presentation from the Norfolk County Retirement Board on. The reimbursement shared services income will be increased by $145,000, a bunch of above our benchmark from last year. And again, that was revenue sourced from the CARES reimbursement from the state. Okay. Number three, the appropriated from general unexpendable balance will increase from $600,000 to $695,230. I was talking to Commissioner Shea this morning, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 35, Section 30, is a very, very interesting legal citation. I've never seen anything like it in my career, but it does require that the county, the county or a county fund, this particular source at 10% of the This particular source at ten percent of the tax assessment on your county. In other words, when you look at the total assessment of all twenty-eight cities and towns. You take ten percent of that value, in this case would be six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. We're getting seven million dollars a year from our respective communities. And we're required to take a portion of our surplus and forward fund that into the next fiscal year. I've never seen anything like it, but that's the way they call for it. It's part of our budget base. We're going to recoup seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Minimum to cover projected expenses for the weights and measures program. I believe the Commissioners have been read in on the plans for this program by the Assistant Director previously, but briefly. There are two pieces to this revenue source to begin FY twenty-four. Each of the communities that are joining currently pay the state a fee for the weights and measures program. When they join our program on July first, they're going to pay us that fee. It's not very big. It's based on their size of their community. And in addition, we're going to charge each community a one-time ten thousand dollar fee to join the program to cover one-time expenses. So this blended cost is going to become part of the new weights and measures program for FY twenty-four to cover. The full-time costs as well as the startup costs. Okay, I'll get into who's in the program in just a moment. And finally, the information technology department will charge back three hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from deeds excise for registry related technology expenses. Slide nine. How did we achieve this balanced budget? But as mentioned, the department has started this process with their presentation to each of you on February seventh. And over the next month, you received all of their reports. We relied on a balance of policy goals, past funding levels and assignment of costs were most appropriate. We adhered to Master and a law in chapter sixty-four D, Section twelve. To balance the registry of deeds budget against prior year spending. Note, as in FY twenty-three, this appropriation will need to be revisited for any adjustment in September twenty-three. Against the actual FY twenty-three spending. So what you'll see in this budget is projected spending. It's likely to be adjusted and we'll fix that in September. That's the cycle. We utilize increased revenue from sources shown previously to offset declining registry revenue. But the county is still experiencing a spike in several nondiscretionary areas. Namely, the group insurance is rising four point five percent or two hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars. As I mentioned, our contribution to the retirement board per the Norfolk County Retirement Vote. Has gone up seven percent since FY twenty-two, almost four hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. And then finally, this is not new because we covered this ground in January, but it's annualizing. Our utility costs are projected to go up twenty-four percent in FY twenty-four. We supplemented it in FY twenty-three. We're carrying that forward into FY twenty-four. At this point, I'm going to pivot to each of the departments and give the Commissioners a brief highlight. What the budget calls for from an operating perspective, a capital perspective and or an ARPA perspective. Again, I'm happy to go into the budget specifically. If you've got any callouts you want me to look into or explain. But for ease of introducing it, I'll start with the Wallace and recreational facility.
Okay, sure, time off if I could. Sorry, great presentation. So if I want to have a question, which I might, where, where am I? I don't have the backup on that. I gotta go to my book right here. Actually, I should be following along each thing, right?
If you want to go into the budget, yes.
I do. Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, thank you, John. Thank you.
The Wallace and recreational facility is projecting some new increased cart rental fees, adding their revenue blend up thirteen thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. Incidentally, this morning Carl sent us an email. He'll probably be before you in August. He and Dana are doing an active across the board fee study compared to other golf courses in the area. And they'll be back in in early August to make some recommendations for upcoming changes. But that was Carl's.
That's rate increases other than the cops.
That's correct.
For next year, not this year.
By the time it gets implemented. Yeah, okay, good. He touched on it when he was here.
Twenty-four, right?
Not planned for twenty-five, twenty-four at this time. This is what's for twenty-four. And then finally, the Commissioners may remember in a prior. Capital request surplus request we funded seventy-five thousand for a new restroom on the golf course after some careful study and review. Props to Patrick Higgins, who's done a lot of work as well as Nancy Rockwell. We're finding that the cost of this prefabricated restroom will likely be in the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range. Which exceeds the capital appropriation. I'm going to try to move that cost over to ARPA. So it'll be an item that I'll apply for. I've already tested it with Clifton Larson. It does contribute to increased hygiene and I think does does touch on the eligibility of that grant. The Commissioner's Office, we're creating a new weights and measures program. It will serve us for communities starting July one, Needham, Franklin, Rentham and Ken. We've already sent out a letter of intent to each of these communities. There's strong interest. In fact, we're starting to experience a little bit of a backlog. Some of the communities are also waiting to see how Norfolk County Fair is standing this program up. And then we expect to see a bundle of additional communities right in the middle of the county. Join, but that won't be for fiscal twenty-four. We'll start with these four. What follows next will be an intermunicipality agreement. Bill Buckley's worked very closely with Attorney Scott Lopez to draft and finalize that agreement, which will go well very shortly. The position that's funded in this budget is already out to bid. We posted it, I believe it was two or three weeks ago. We've already gotten a few resumes. We're going to hold out hiring anyone until July first, but we do expect to start interviewing later this spring, early, you know, somewhere around May, June. In addition to the full-time hire, we are expecting to bring on a contracted hire to help the new. Full-time employees stand up the program. We do see the value in having an experienced individual familiar with the. Massachusetts State Regulations on weights and measures, coach up this new hire. The funding for that particular contract will likely move into a full-time slot following FY twenty-four. So we're very excited about the program. Bill's done a phenomenal job chasing down all the various pieces and actors and we're optimistic that we should be good to go on July first. There are some operating budget salary increases presented in the Commissioner's Office due to new supervisory duties. ARPA funding for possible partnership with a local health organization for promoting awareness and giving. I think I mentioned that we had a nonprofit in boat a month and a half or two months ago. That's right, and they have since given us a plan to use our money to help them expand their giving program, which suffered dramatically under COVID. As they, as you probably recall, they have a large fundraising event every October, but that has been stalled due to COVID. They're looking to restart that in October of twenty twenty-four and continue forward. This particular model that they're looking to bring forward, still needs some work. I'm going to ask Bill Galvin to work on that with me, right? IT. Users will observe in the IT budget that we now have two codes. I want to thank Sam Evans who did a very fine job on his first budget submission. The new budget tracking method will allow the registry their own code of O one and all non-registery O five. To track costs appropriately within the groups. This assures that we have a clean line between the funding source, which could be registry deed, for example, versus all others. There'll be no co-mingling. IT is planning new capital costs next fiscal year, FY twenty-five. For improved automation and system upgrades, you will see nothing in the FY twenty-four capital plan. For IT, they're busy putting together the pieces now. There's an operating budget salary increase for a new assistant CIO. This will create efficient lines of supervision and project management. It also provides for organizational redundancy. Finally, funding for all county department needs for hardware, software and supplies are now hosted in the IT department budget. Note that the registry deeds IT chargeback line under the registry deeds summary budget covers their, their value associated with those costs. Slide eleven. Facility maintenance. The biggest highlight here are the ARPA maintenance programs. We're looking to fund a study. In fact, it will be one of the grant awards you approve next week. In other words, it's on its way to being approved. Habib Associates will look at two specific areas for potential ARPA project funding. The first. Is to provide outside air HVAC circulation for Denham Superior Court. Excuse me, and installation of a new building management system at the Denham District Court. That can be scaled up for use in all facilities to control HVAC and other energy driven systems for operations and efficiencies. I do want to call out, it's not on this deck, but you should know that the budget presentation. For the facilities does include three funded vacancies, including the latest Cummings vacancy. For potential funding in FY twenty-four, I'll be working with the facility maintenance director. To make sure that we start to think ahead about funding these vacancies and leaving them funded. So that we can spy when the Quincy District Court closure and the impact it will have on staffing lands on us so we don't get caught. Without the available options to keep people safe from any of that affected closure. The Norfolk County Agricultural High School, the FY twenty-four budget. Is designed to achieve a balance between in district and out of district tuition to meet the net school spending per DUCI. We have also prepared for your approval over two hundred thousand in capital spending at the school. Specifically for a public address system upgrade and a camera system upgrade. In addition, the school is eyeing two larger sections of ARPA funding. One is a half a million dollars for various HVAC improvements in Kemp Hall and the Plant Sciences Building. And they're also requesting a hundred fifty-two thousand for premium pay benefits for eligible staff at the schools. And then finally, the registry deeds. This particular budget I reduced by seven hundred eighteen thousand dollars from the US. To meet the prior year spending obligations plus two and a half percent. As I mentioned earlier, we're monitoring revenue collections. Market activity has slowed due to economic factors, including interest and borrowing rates. Our onsite fully staffed IT services and planning coordination. Will look forward to two impactful working groups in FY twenty-four. To evaluate number one and primarily the registry database for possible upgrade or replacement. Sam's group will also form a separate working group. To look at the county financial system infinite visions for time and attendance application and other budget development optimizations. Moving on to slide twelve, we're now going to move from the operating budget specifically into the capital plan and proposed ARPA projects. As I mentioned, the advisory board approved a million dollars in forward funding for FY twenty-four capital needs in September of twenty twenty-two. This fund is being used to allocate five hundred seventy-five thousand for capital needs in FY twenty-four. The balance is being used as revenue to offset large expenses such as the aforementioned retirement contribution increase for FY twenty-four. Regarding ARPA, the Norfolk County Commissioners have resolved to place the twenty-eight cities and towns first. To date, the county has expended over fifty-seven million to twenty-one communities of the hundred and thirty-seven million dollar grant. The county's three percent set aside of the grant for projects and administration is now in play. And with under twenty-four months to obligate the funds, the Commissioners and the Commissioners desire is to begin planning projects for the county use now. On slide thirteen, in the far right column, I don't know if it'll show very well, but I'll call your attention on the big screen. It might be easier to see. I'll, I'll just go down the list for the proposed ARPA projects in FY twenty-four. Some of them are redundant. I just brought them up. Thanks, Bill. So the new restroom on the course will be isolated as a two hundred fifty thousand dollar cost. On the Commissioner's Office, the Denham District ARPA projects will be twenty thousand dollars. That's the study. The Alzheimer's Association, as Commissioner Shay just mentioned, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollars, but we'll work on that budget once we isolate more about what the program details include. The Treasurer's Office desires a financial literacy program at fifty thousand dollars. I am currently projecting the cost of the programs that will be studied by Habib. To be one point two five million for the outside air handler at Denham Superior Court. And a hundred thousand for the building management system. Again, I want to emphasize estimated costs. The known costs will be part of the study that Habib does. We'll report back. And no doubt the cost of those projects will impact the Commissioners' decisions on whether or not to go forward with them or expand them. And then finally, at the bottom, as I mentioned, the various HVAC improvements for the Plant Science Building, Kemp Hall, McFarland. And also the Avery Hall, all those HVAC improvements as well as the premium pay. Are part of the overall three point one two four million dollar ARPA project plans for FY twenty-four. Slide fourteen. The Quincy District Court. As many know, including the Commissioners, is under point of sale with the Commonwealth. The Commissioners have agreed to sell the Quincy District Court to the Commonwealth for ten point four million dollars. The county and the Commonwealth have scheduled a public hearing on this matter for April nineteenth in Quincy City Council slash Great Hall Chambers. The county expects to close in on the sale on or about June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the Commonwealth expects to utilize the county resources to operate the facility as of July first. In other words. They're going to try to keep the model going with our, with our, our staff and our resources. The details of that have not been let out yet. This is beyond the trial court lease, but the idea is to keep everything going as it is right now. We haven't identified, for example, who's going to pay the utility bills and so forth, because all of that will not be controlled by the Commonwealth. So. More to come on that after we close, but for now, they're hoping to keep the status quo. The Commonwealth is currently expected to complete the design study by the end of twenty twenty-three. And then proceed to construction documents and bidding. Construction is expected to begin in twenty twenty-five with completion by twenty twenty-eight. And incidentally, that information I just revealed was provided to Commissioner Shay and us. By the Department of Capital Management and Maintenance this past Monday morning. There. Slide fifteen. The Quincy District Court sale presents an opportunity for the county to realize the chance to activate the Capital Improvement Fund. As noted here, the county currently has authority under Chapter thirty-five, Section twenty-eight B subsection H subsection I. To create a so-called Capital Improvement Fund. The law indicates that the advisory board must activate it or create it. So I intend on April twelfth, notwithstanding any direction from you to request the advisory board to do so by funding a thousand dollars. For our surplus to create this fund. The details of this fund indicate that funds going into the particular. Capital Improvement Fund will require a two-thirds vote and will also. Need a two-thirds vote of the advisory board to withdraw any such funds deposited therein. The benefit of putting it into Capital Improvement Fund or any of the proceeds from Quincy for that matter ensures that the money will be used for capital. Improvement purposes only. And as the Commissioners now know, the county doesn't have really any resource other than bonding, which we're a cap on or available surplus, which are. Difficult most times to, to, to find our hands on. This particular fund gives us a sense going forward that for any large events that. We were, would require one-time capital resources for, it would reside in this fund. Many communities have their own capital improvement fund as well as a stabilization. We're joining that effect as we already have.
If the money goes in there though, if any economy is used for capital improvement. Can we, what if something came up like the retirement, for example?
That would involve a stabilization.
So can we take some of that money and put it in our stabilization account?
Yes, you can.
Oh, we can?
Yes, you can. I would advise though that when we look at stabilization next fiscal year, if I recall correctly. Our, our financial guidelines are we should have up to twenty percent of our omnibus or operating account. In stabilization, if I recall correctly from our last. Advisory Board meeting, Commissioner, I think we're at just over eighteen percent funded. So we're virtually at the cap, but not there yet. We could put more into your answer your question, but yes, that's a path as well. Yes, I understand. That concludes the presentation of the FY twenty-four budget. Slide sixteen includes suggested motions, full considerations, but. Before I do turn it back over to Commissioner Shay, I just wanted to extend my thanks. I probably could have done this at the outset, so forgive me. This is a, a multi-pronged plan, as you all know. It takes a team to get these things done. I want to express my appreciation to each department and their staffs that contributed to the creation of their annual budget. As well as the finance team here and the Commissioner's Office, Tony Akins, Bill Buckley, Joe Diaria. Who's of course with the Treasurer's Office, Phil Iantosca, Michelle Abedini, Nancy Rockwell. It's been a pleasure working with them over the last several months. Without their help, this was not possible. So thank you to them. Prepared to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. Commissions, any questions as we go forward? Again. Excellent presentations. The devil's in the detail. We have a detailed budget here. I hate to repeat myself, but we're keeping with our schedule, so. Go to the next level today. If you have any questions, now is the time to ask them.
Okay, I can go first?
Sure.
If you want.
I have one question. It's on the return.
Coming off the plane fresh, so I got a bunch of questions, but I.
And apparently it beat the two.
With absolutely. It was wonderful. It was great. Well, first of all, great job by everyone. I certainly. A pleasure to read and to have the information presented in this manner. And I know it's going to bode well for all of us. It's a good reflection for everyone as a team. A couple of questions, so if there's, I'm going to go through if you don't mind. I'm going to go very quickly. So. Yes, we're on schedule. Fantastic. The original estimates were over a million dollars. So as part of the process. As our director, you made some decisions obviously to balance the budget out. Was there any follow-up by you back to those department heads and just say, I've made this decision. If you have any question, I want you to know I'm presenting to the Commissioners.
No, there were follow-up questions with many departments to clarify information. I want to emphasize a lot of that was on the salary side. We had a fair amount of submissions that required rework. Michelle did a lot of work refining them. And the difficulty was really because of the collective bargaining impact on projected costs, as you know. And the difficulty was really because of the um, the collective bargaining impact on projected costs, as you know, we had to do some retroactive. Colas for a couple of unions. And so the calculations for both the base and FY twenty four were a little bit more complicated than normal. So that communication was clear, but no, I don't, I don't communicate back what I prepare because it's your, it's now your budget to do that.
Right. So maybe my memory question is more appropriate for my colleagues. Right? As we reviewed all these budgets, we did. Every single budget we did, as we've done before, since I've been on, you know, panel, you're on a survey, we've said, we'll take it under advisement, and we did. And we didn't really say much either way. And now we're here with my director, what he's recommending. Do we owe it to them to give them a chance to respond? Or is that going to muddy the water? Do we want to say, I mean, mostly seem pretty straightforward. They do. I have a couple of small questions.
No, I don't think today.
What's, what's the appropriate uh, form of experience?
I don't think I'll be saying today that uh, we're going to take this under advisement. I'm looking for a vote to go forward.
You are, okay, okay.
Today to keep with our calendar.
Okay.
Having said that. I am the last person to say it's a complete difference in the way we used to do it. Just because we spent a lot of money in studies the last few years and hopefully some of that is coming to fruition through this document. And I feel that it is particularly in the IT side, but going back to the Abraham's report also.
Yeah.
And that, that goes, although it, it, we're not, we're not. Trumpeting it, 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 it makes me feel good that some of this money has been well spent and we're going into a system where everyone's. System-wise is going from the same side of the plate, so to speak. And we didn't get different budgets and, and one, ones on one kind of spreadsheet thing, ones on another. We're, we're into this document, I think. That other than, and we've got one more department outstanding on, 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 on signing up all the unions for three years. That is a, that is a victory. Uh, so we can make proper prognostications from here on in. We've already taken one year into consideration because. One year's gone by because we went back to last July, but we paid for that. The rest of them are coming up and I think uh. All of that is a good thing, but I'd, I'd like to get a vote to go forward today.
Okay, so your, your preference, Mr. Chandler, you want to go forward the vote?
Yes.
To keep in the schedule. Okay. Alright, so that said, and with that in mind respectfully, uh, let me ask a couple of things. If I could, uh, so uh. On page seven, uh, you've got your budget, revenue projections. And it says registry down, uh, you know, about fourteen percent. And then it has a community access fund. I got that. Court rental up. So on the registry, was that based on conversation, data, trends? How did you base that?
Data and trends.
Yeah.
Looking at the trial balances, which are the actual collections um, that are produced by the Treasurer's Office. I actually had several conversations with Joe.
Yeah.
About the historical nature of it, but um, when you watch the trends, and the register, by the way, submits. As many of you know, um, regular announcements on deeds activities. So we know. That the market in Norfolk County is um, slowing down. Um, and I don't think that's unique to Norfolk County. So when you combine that with the known facts of the economic downturn. The results are shown in the monthly trial balances and collections that we're seeing.
Okay, so one thing would be, obviously, we go forward with these assumptions. If things go up or down, we can modify accordingly. At least it's best, our best estimate this time.
That's right.
Based on what you did. Okay. I just wondered how you arrived at it, that's all. That's fine. I'm not questioning. I just want to understand it. Okay, on number uh, eight, the uh. The program waits and measures. Very happy to see four towns and very pleased to see Canton. I know like many other towns, they want to get involved. Uh, the new revenue is projected to be seventy seven five hundred. So is this program going to be self-funding? Or will it be a, uh, we'll make a little bit of money on it or what? I'm not quite understanding how that exactly works yet.
That's a great question. Um, it's great because the answer to the question is almost, we don't know yet, but we will, I will explain this. Initially, we're going to be collecting the fees that the, had been provided to the state by the communities for these services.
Yeah.
The fees are generated based on age-old functions or fee costs. That many communities haven't even touched or looked at in generations. So once we start working with the various communities, we do expect over a period of time. For our program to speak directly with the communities to find out, are these fees up to date? Have you analyzed them to find out if they, are they market-directed? Um, is there room to increase it because if the fees increase, yes, then the fees could begin to cover the cost of the program. But clearly, right now, they would not. Because the total fees include a one-time value, which goes away after the first year.
Alright.
It will be left out, but ultimately, if we can get the county um, communities that are joining the program to agree to change the fee mix. We're, we're on to self-funding at that point. But that has, that's not in the program now. But I do envision it in year two, year three, we're going to be having a strong conversation about that.
Alright, um, and I appreciate the idea of the Mass General Law, chapter thirty five. That's good to know. I never knew that.
Commissioner Shea just spoke about the Abraham's Group and some of the operational improvements these you commissioners have sponsored over the last couple of years. That was called out by the um, Abraham's Group in their report to seek a, a capital improvement fund. We did some research um, and found that it was sitting right there in General Law, chapter thirty five, right above the stabilization fund, so it's.
That's great. Yeah, that's great. Alright, uh. We went along and go as quick as I can. Oh yeah, utility costs, real quick. So are we, that twenty four percent, I know we went up twenty percent everywhere.
That's right.
Are we looking at another twenty percent again?
Another great question. So I met with Tara um, after her budget, uh, it was just before her budget presentation. Uh, we talked a little bit about that and I'm also in tune to other facility managers that I, I work with and know. Um, it, it's really crystal ball thinking about where, especially the fossil fuel industry is going with values and costs. Uh, last fall, they were projecting forty percent increases for natural gas distribution cost increases. Um, which, you know, were exceedingly high. We see right now um, with the infusion of twenty percent increases in FY twenty three that we did in January, holding steady.
That's right.
Against what we see, you know, since then through the end of June.
Right.
So we're going to hold that increase into next year.
Okay.
We're not increasing it more than what we already have.
Okay.
And what was supplemented halfway through FY twenty three.
Okay.
But you never know. If the markets shift and change.
Yeah.
Uh, we may have to revisit it, but I don't want to hyperfund it. I think that's.
Yeah.
That's a trap. Um, and I think at this point, we see um, some leveling. And that's the best way to describe it.
Good. Okay, I'm on the same page there.
Yeah.
Alright, so now we go to the actual budgets, Wallace and recreational uh, fine Commissioner's Office. So um. Without getting personal, trying to be professional, looking at the positions, uh, I'm a big believer. That once anybody or a person uh, takes on additional responsibility, this should be additional compensation. There, there's no question. My, my question is always going to be, how do you evaluate that? How do you come up with the correct number? You know, and you always want to try to find out how their sources, how their things to reference. Uh, there are similar people and similar roles. Um. Yeah, truthfully, in terms of uh, one position, that of the director, in terms of taking on additional things. Seems appropriate. Yeah, seems appropriate. On the other hand, when we're just beginning a new program. My fear on that, again, without getting into the person, just looking at the position.
Yeah.
My fear is, shouldn't we get this person or that job underway? And show success to our advisory board and our constituent towns? And then perhaps come back later, the following year, with justification for an increase in compensation.
Mm-hmm.
So with that said. Again, irrespective of the individual, my feeling would be to have perhaps fifty percent of that pay or even seventy five percent. Of what we had looked at in that statement. I, I don't know if I'm comfortable going the proposal in that. And that's where I'm coming from, now being honest with my colleagues. That's all. I've only looked at it in terms of, we're just beginning that, it's brand new. There is a certain amount of work to be done. I'd love to see success. The, the other hit position, we have a track record. We did an awful lot of work on that. And let's face it, Sam has been reporting now for bulk of this year. So I, understanding that in terms of responsibility and. Is it, do, again, trying to get the person, I'm looking at the position, that, that makes sense to me, you know what I'm saying? Uh, and that's where I'm coming from. I don't know how I go about that, or if I want to go about it. My colleagues might disagree and that's fine. You know, it's always respectful. At least you know where I'm coming from, okay? The other thing was the uh, uh. On the commissioner's budget, no, that was it. There was another question I had on that. So I don't know if you want to, want me to go through the whole page or just?
No, I wonder if I could just give you a brief background on the salary pieces that you just referenced. Um. I recall I shared with you um, a brief salary comparison analysis with um, other county officials, um, and what their rates are. Uh, specifically in the title that you are referring to, I can tell you that the title in um, Barnstable County makes considerably more. For a regional services manager style position, similar to the one that's here.
Did you give me that? I hope you, did you?
But that's, it was sourced from marketed um, salary information from, from comparative um, districts. In this case, it was Barnstable.
Okay.
That was almost one and a half. I can't hear him. Wasn't, wasn't that almost one and a half, was it? Uh, the director was. The director's. Different universe, but the assistant is paid more down at Barnstable.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a different type of animal.
They're all distinctly, right. They're all distinctly different, but they're all county functions.
Yeah.
And the reason for this recommendation is because we're now really embracing. Um, the regional services model that I think ARPA gave us, that this division's been actively working on. And is now extending into a program that's only going to grow. Um, so that, that, that I thought justified the uh, at least the ask here, so.
Okay.
Just want to give you that background. If you have any other questions on the other departments?
If we can't be honest, that's what I want to be, is always. And I think, I, I mean, my fear is that it's just a new program. We haven't really got it underway. I'd love to see it again. I know it's going to do well. I know it is. And it's going to grow and that's going to grow itself, but. That's, that was what, what I felt on that.
Okay.
And it no reflection on the individual, who I have great respect for.
Yep.
Information technology, uh, my question there was again, going to sources. Was there something in the Ripples or Abraham report that kind of pushed that along to have an assistant? In terms of, we have a director, great job, now we have an assistant. Was that, what, what, how did that come about?
I don't, I don't recall that it did. Um, I've had multiple, I, I meet weekly with the CIO.
I understand.
And the CIO also meets weekly with the register and his staff. He's, he's pretty well spread thin. I think the realization is that the expertise of this particular employee um, is, is so well-defined and well-known. Um, he, he really kind of defines a specialty that needs to have more of a focus on managing. Registry functions and operations.
Okay.
He doesn't have a peer, in other words.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he has already shown us as an interim CIO, that he has the capacity to lead and make recommendations. Um, after speaking with Sam, the way we're going to move in FY twenty five to develop. Uh, the development of the recommendations that Ripples Group talked about.
Mm-hmm.
For improved tele- uh, um, technology needs in the, in the county. You're going to need a deputy to help oversee at least the major prong of that, which is going to require a significant subject matter expertise. And that's the Brown Tech system. And there's only one person over there that knows it that well. So he needs to lead that and he needs to be responsible for the people that service that. So the presentation of a, of a, of a deputy or an assistant CIO gives us a few different features. It does, it gives Sam the ability to task him with handling that responsibility and also the supervision that's under him. And it also presents some redundancy. Um, having been a former interim CIO, it gives us now that vertical structure that every organization should strive for.
I believe that. And so now he, what is in, who he hears she, okay, that's the position. That person reports to.
The CIO.
The CIO.
Yeah.
Okay, that organizationally. And so last question on this. That person now, will that create a vacancy? So will we hiring a new person?
No.
No, okay.
No, they're going to continue doing the job that they had and now you're adding supervision and project, project management. Okay, good question.
Okay, great, thanks. That was on my mind there. Alright, great. A few more and I'm done. Um. Facility maintenance, yep, you're on the ball there. Uh, and the Aggie School. So on the Aggie School, uh, you know, we had some questions. Uh, the budget that was presented by the trustees, right?
It's in here.
Is that, is that reflected here?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is? Okay, oh. So is, is there a change in that budget?
I, I, I was going to make a proposal for a change.
Okay.
But, but not to the, not end number, but just to the uh, to some of the, some of the changes within the budget, that's all.
Okay, so maybe I'll hold off on that then.
No, you can keep going.
I didn't know if that was um, uh, you know, was we handle, I mean, probably aside from, and probably not totally germane. But I actually spent time this morning getting ready for the meeting. I went back and looked at the Abraham report. A pretty good read. It actually did a very good job on the Aggie School and a lot of the things that they predicted. You could see it happening. Now it's coming to fruit with the DESI. And at the time, remember, I think that Abraham report went up to fiscal twenty two. If I'm wrong, correct me. It was fiscal twenty two, when they were projecting.
I'm not sure.
So, but basically, we were okay in terms of DESI. We were all right. And they gave the reasons in terms of where we were, but two things changed. One was we raised our tuition, which we had to do. And the other thing was.
And we also had a study done for that.
That's right. And the lunch, we did, oh yeah, that was backed up by the.
That's right.
What was that? The Lions Report. But the other thing was, the lunch program now has been taken out. So you've got that revenue that you would have had to put towards or expense for lunches has been removed. And in the Abraham report, that was factored in. So when I look at DESI and I look at the criticism, you know, we're getting from them, that's something that should be flagged is that we don't have to cover lunches anymore. That should be some kind of a waiver, an exception. But I went on here to talk about DESI.
Actually, I, I talked to um, um, Superintendent Martin the other day and, and they've ironed out the, the DESI issues.
They did?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah.
It would have saved me three hours of reading. But that's all right. No, that's good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, alright, I just thought that the budget presented by the trustees. Uh, had some questions that we were going to talk about today. And you know, if you want to get into that, uh, that's fine.
But to be clear, the budget that's here represents what the school asked for.
Okay, okay, got it. Capital program, we're only looking at five hundred seventy five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Correct?
Because.
Because we need the other money for.
It, because that helped, but also because we're now it's beginning to complement our capital needs with ARPA.
Right.
We haven't done that for the first year and a half because we put the cities and towns first.
I've got it. Okay, alright, um. That was it for now. Okay, I yield to.
I, I had a few things, Joe, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, um, wait, I, I left you one of these copies and I have one for John too, but. Um, I was looking at the, the school and there were um, eight individuals. That were requested to have um, increases above uh, two and a half percent. So everyone, everyone at the school is going to get the two and a half percent. That's easy. But there was um, a request from the school for uh, additional numbers beyond that. And um, I looked at, I looked at the different numbers and I. Um, I'm looking at the reserves and the idea that for future years, like this year, for this particular year, we did well. Because we had so many out-of-country students, but next year, we don't know. The whole thing could flip. And. Uh, in order to build our reserves a little bit and to be fair with all the. Uh, individuals at the school, I, I was thinking of a flat rate in addition to the two point five percent. For the eight um, individuals that I've outlined and highlighted in this um, in this document. Um, I know that they requested, uh, some of, some of the numbers are actually a little less, um, but some of the numbers were more. Uh, but I, I just sort of flat amount uh, would, would be fair across the board to all the administrators so that. No one feels singled out that they didn't get what everyone else got. And I just thought that that was um, the fairest way to address it. But the, the final budget number for the school is the same. But with these changes, um, the school had put it almost an additional seventeen thousand dollars towards the reserve uh, for next year. That, that would be my proposal.
Now, when you're confused, you're saving sixteen thousand on the salary.
But that money just goes into the reserves, Richard.
Oh, okay.
None of it, none of it is taken from the school. The school still gets it. It just goes into the reserves.
Right, okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
But everyone gets the two and a half percent that everyone else in the county gets, but this is, um, but the uh, school had requested. Uh, an amount in addition to that two and a half percent for some of the administrators. And so this is what I came up with to, to try to make it fair for everybody.
I have a question.
Yes.
So. Budget time is not my favorite time, but I'm a lot better than I used to be and I've really started that. You notice when, under factors, we list all our non-union people, starting with John Martin and going all the way down to the kitchen staff. Under factors. John Wallace has listed where he got this information and that's good. One, two, three, four, fifth person, fifth person down. Finance associate, name means nothing, says step and cola. Now, in my conversations with Director Bronan today. I, we went back and forth a little bit with some explanation. If you take, we're not taking the step out on anyone, I hope.
No, no, those, those.
Those have to stay, correct?
Those individuals aren't getting a chance to step and call the people.
They're not?
No. These aren't stepping, no, this isn't. These, these are just the administrator, administrators that, cause a, a step is a union position, right? And these are non-union. These are the non-union administrators.
I don't know about that. And again, I hate to open Pandora's watch, but.
Well, these are non-union people that are on a schedule, so they do get steps as though they were a union.
Okay, okay. So the fifth number person here.
Just to differentiate, Joe, I think you can see from this spreadsheet that John Wallace gave the commissioners, there are FR notations. Those are flat rate people. Those are strict management.
Right. But if it says step and cola. They're gonna get the step and the cola. And if it just says cola, which she did in some cases, we're gonna give them twelve, no, we're only gonna give the eight to twelve hundred dollars. Okay. All right, I just wanna be, have that explained.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
So I'm gonna, again, I, I'm gonna take a, a different view and I'm doing respectfully.
All right.
And, but, but I'm also gonna show myself on the foot here too. So I got the, I got the email from Superintendent.
You've got, you've covered all the bases.
I've covered it all.
That's all right.
So Superintendent Martin sent the letter out, I guess, last week. And he said what he did was he surveyed Bristol Aggie, Old Colony, Franklin County, Neshoba. You got the thing, right?
I had that list because I was the.
So based on those.
My parish and I were studying salaries.
Excellent. The problem I got is that I wish he had, and again, it, this, you can do a lot with surveys. You can glean what you want, you know, you do the best you can. The Abraham report. Had a different kinda look at schools when they were looking at evaluating the Aggie itself, the budget. They looked at different schools. Some of them are the same, like they did Bristol, obviously. You know, Bristol Aggie is a no-brainer, but they looked at other schools as well. So maybe that would have been, that's one flaw in, in terms of it. But one thing, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to what I said. If somebody's doing additional work, I firmly believe they're entitled to additional compensation.
Correct.
Please bear in mind, I say this respectfully, that John Martin pointed out to us that the Director of Special Services, Special Education. Took on a new position. So I don't think it's fair.
We didn't change that.
Well, you did. You've got her down for just, uh, twenty, what is it? The, uh?
There, there was one person we didn't change. Hold on a second.
Okay, she's highlighted my list here. And then that's inconsistent.
What, 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 what's the title?
So Director of Special Services, I hate to single people out.
No.
You've got her highlighted. Caitlin, Skelly, Kim, Kim.
Okay, I see.
Kim. She's, she was slated to get a raise, a different raise, but you've got her highlighted for twelve hundred. And I don't mean to make it personal. But he said he changed her job. She has a new job description. And that was in his letter to us. He, he just said, you know, basities are not new, new, new direction. So for someone like that, I mean, and that's where it gets tough. We're gonna have to go through each one of these, but if someone's taking on additional work. You know, I, I think you're gonna be careful.
I know that there was one employee that, that bumped way up. I'm looking for it now. And I have no problem with it.
So if that was one person, I think, I hate to single out people, but if they're doing something new. And they, they, he's got a new job description, I, I, I don't feel it's fair to just say, okay, give him a flat, you know, twelve hundred. They should get, I guess, what John had recommended. Um. That's tricky, but I'm trying to be consistent. Now here, this, here, I get, oh yeah, I'll read it to you. A reminder. The initial suggestions for the administrators included a market adjustment. And that's what he said. For one of the assistant principals and also reflected the changes in title and responsibilities for another. That occurred when we restructured and transitioned from employing a specialized director to now employing Director of Student Services. So.
He definitely did single that out.
He did single it out.
Saying, I believe, and I'm again, talking about opening Pandora's box. I think the same thing goes for, for the Director of Facility Maintenance and Security. There's a market adjustment there for a very capable person.
I mean, so that's.
I know.
It, I, I, I'm trying to be consistent, that's all. I mean, we're, and I believe someone does more work. And their job changes, they should get extra compensation. But.
One of the problems that we have with the Director of Facilities Maintenance and Security.
Yeah.
Person who I, I care quite a bit about, that person also has, also has a house.
He what?
He has the house too. Yeah, he has a house on the campus.
Yes, he does.
Yeah.
I mean, he does.
Okay.
The only, well, I don't, we made adjustments on the house because it only had to do with the, the old business manager had a house. Now where the farm manager has the house, so I don't wanna, that's good.
Right.
We all agree.
And we need people in the houses.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Well.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if it's down to a vote on Commissioner's office in the school, can we do one and then go to the next one? If we wanna make an adjustment or we don't wanna make an adjustment, either we're gonna take what's in this. I'm trying to do one and then go back to the school.
Yeah.
Just for purposes of Sandy.
Okay, all right.
Okay, if, if Commissioner Stady wishes to make a change, you get a need motion and, and act on that motion. And we can discuss it again in the motion.
You're right.
And then we'll go to the school, cause I don't wanna jump back and forth.
So make it simple, I guess, make it simple. I'll move that we, uh. Move forward with the Commissioner's budget as presented, uh, with one. One modification, that's the position for the. Is it, was it leave, was it weight and sales emission or was it? Just like.
Twenty-three, page twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. In my book, right?
Yes, and the budget.
Yep. That's the treasurer, right? Am I in front of the treasurer?
Might be. I don't know where Bill put your budget. Might be here.
Copy in mind right here?
I have.
Yeah, if you look under the individual names, it was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down, it clearly indicates. There's, there's an adjustment there.
Right, okay.
There was also for the fourth person.
This is budget, right?
Mm-hmm.
I have personnel, contractual supplies. Here we go, okay, here.
Next page.
Got it, okay. Uh, all right, so, let's see. Will I move to change?
You can adjust the bottom line if you want, by a certain dollar.
Yeah, all right. So move, my motion would be to change under budget code, subtotal code under it. Actually, is that right? Or is it code one ten? No, code one hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Personal services, uh, I'd move the amount. Take away. All right, so one million, oh. Four, seven, two, five, five, oh, nine, a reduction of five thousand. Am I doing that right? Just saying in terms of proper numbers.
It's oh, four, six, two, five, five.
I would say we have to go to oh, four, one, two, five, five.
Commissioner, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think you may be looking at the prior version. Uh, the total code right now is one million.
Yep.
Oh, forty-six.
Right.
Two fifty-five point oh nine.
Okay, so it's gonna be one, oh, four, one, two, five, five, oh, nine.
A reduction of five thousand dollars.
Yeah, five thousand. That's a motion.
That's a motion.
Get this out of the way.
Do we have a second to the motion? If we're gonna discuss it further, we need a second for discussion. If not, I'll make a ruling on the motion.
Yeah, I'm not gonna second it.
Okay. Um, I would say that amendments budget fails for lack of a second on the motion, of the motion.
Okay.
Okay, let's, that puts the commission, we have no other question to the Commissioner's budget. Back to the schools.
Schools.
Yes.
So.
On the schools, I need to find it, get the.
Same thing. Where are we, John?
Yeah.
Well, we can force, and schools like the schools in towns where they have a general vote and then they can move the money around. Is that right? You know, when you're telling, if you vote, you can't, if you vote the school budget, you don't really, you, you don't, you don't have the right to tell the school committee where to put the money. That's a real Pandora's box.
Don't, don't.
Your, your vote, your vote.
My turn in trouble, you're gonna wish I stayed.
Well, I think this whole budget, if, if, if you vote us this whole budget and there's a salary, I want the right figure next to the person.
I understand.
Regardless.
All right.
For, 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 for a million reasons beyond the schooling.
All right.
I, I just, I don't know how else to do it.
The budget's gonna be the same. The number.
Bottom line?
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be sixteen, it's gonna be somewhere.
No, as Peter said, no, the, if we vote, if we, if we vote Commissioner Collins's motion.
They get to keep, they get to keep that sixteen thousand, but it goes into another account, right?
Goes into the reserves.
But it's in, it's in the school account though.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, so we can touch it, the school touches it in the reserves.
So wherever the number is, it's the number.
Okay, but you can't pay people out of reserves, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
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 Who can, John, Director, is that correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Well, good.
Okay. All right. Good to talk you through. That's all I wanted to make sure we were okay. All right, so. As I said, I think Peter's done a great job here. I, I, I understand where he's going with it. And I appreciate that. I just have trouble by a couple of positions. Again, trying to get into the people. If the position requires additional work or a change of work. We should have been looking at maybe that differently. Uh.
Show, show me that again with the, um, that Kim.
I wanna make sure, and I hope I'm reading this right.
I just wanna make sure.
It's the little question, the, we were, we were told by John Martin.
He just said, reminder, he said, the, the suggestions for administrators include a market adjustment.
For the Director of Student Services.
But he said one of them.
It used to have another title. He also told us.
Right, right.
He's incorporated more work.
Right.
Okay.
That's the one.
I, I heard it.
So.
Okay, so, so if, um, so what would you propose for that individual?
Well, yeah, let me if I can find it. Give me a second. Well, try to find out what he originally suggested. And maybe halfway.
She's eleventh down on the list.
Well, what do you, what do they propose? If I could just find her, uh, individual. And she's highlighted. It was, uh, Kim, Katan. Here it is. Okay, so I think if I'm reading this right, right, he was recommending a six thousand dollar change.
Correct.
Right?
Which looks like a five point one percent.
Right.
Increase.
Correct. So then it was gonna be, um. So that, I don't understand. So over here, is that the one twenty, what she would have got? What's, what are those three columns? Then it has three and it has twelve. What's the twelve that we got proposed?
The, the, the twelve on the right was that, um, adjustment in addition to the two and a half percent.
Right. Is the three thousand the two and a half percent?
It says salary increase from F Y twenty-three base. So it's an increase, it looks like, of cola. Plus market.
Cola plus market.
Plus a market correction, yeah.
Cola plus market, so.
That's two and a half plus, plus twelve hundred dollars. Am I right?
Right. Okay, see, I guess right, he has her, he was recommended that she go up to, um, one thirty and she'll end up with one twenty. So what if we made a compromise of, say, five thousand? And that way she's, she gets one twenty-five. And then, so you're still gonna have a surplus of eleven thousand. I, I can't think of, I don't know of anybody else that had their job changed.
What do you think, Joe?
At least based on the letter. I'm only, I'm only basing it.
On the letter.
On the letter.
Yes, I think yes. I agree.
Okay.
You know.
All right, I'll do that.
And I do, I mean, I, I hate getting into this individual.
And I think we know, she's been with us for a few years. I know, I'm not doing this because I know her, but I've seen her.
I believe I'm, we met her at last year's, first year.
But yeah, again, we're trying to be consistent, Joe. New position, new new job, more responsibility. Superintendent's recommending it. I would say, I, I don't know what the particular motion would be. I would move that we, uh. So maybe we need to do this. Let's see, procedurally, move your motion, Peter. That's a provocative way to do it. Is your motion has to go first. Technically, I amended to change one thing and then we vote the whole thing.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's how you do it.
Sounds clean.
All right, so I'll make my motion.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that all the, um, all the, um, non-union administrators, um. Get the same two and a half percent as everyone else.
Right.
Plus twelve hundred dollars.
Right. I'll second.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
No, wait, no, I don't know.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna amend his motion, amend it, which you can do. To change just in terms of one person and as the individual, not the, I'd see, uh, the position of Director of Student Services.
Not the person, the title.
The title. The, the position of Director of Student Services, uh, be reflecting a. Total pay of one, one twenty-five, nine fifty. So whatever that would be, I don't know what the number would actually be, but that would bring that, instead of being one twenty, nine fifty. That it'd be, uh, one twenty-five, nine fifty. Based upon, my argument, if I may. Is based upon the fact that Superintendent Martin has pointed out additional responsibility was incurred by this person, this position, this position. Fair enough?
Yep, I understand it. I think it's fair.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so now, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, you got a motion with an amendment?
I got a motion with one amendment.
Yeah, that's it.
Now, when I take this vote. And we're gonna have Director Cronin change these salaries accordingly. They may not change.
And the balance will go into the reserves.
What, the, in, did we have more work, responsibility?
No, it's the same.
Okay, okay. Um, and what was the vice principal? The lower, just the one I went to person. He said one vice principal had additional responsibility. Let's try to figure out. He said for one of the assistant principals. I don't know which one it was. Which is too bad, but.
I believe it's Sean Crowley.
He did get bumped.
For lack of another, it's, he's the, he's the building leadership academic assistant principal.
Yes, I think you might be right.
It's about ten, it's about twelve down.
Yeah.
Says one fifteen, one nineteen. He gets, then, then he gets the three point five. And then it was a market correction in here.
Okay, so Mr. Martin was looking to make that position an increase of four. And it ended up being, so it would have been. It's hard, can we make this a little smaller? Would have been one twenty-three. And under the proposed schedule, it'd be one seventeen. What's he the, the individual?
I only, I only thought it was one person.
Okay, I thought maybe he was the one.
Okay.
Do you wanna change that one too? Where was additional work?
According to this, his increase above color is one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
Right, I bumped him up.
He did.
They, they asked for less. I gave him more.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it was the other way around.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I, I, and I think that's all, I think. You're trying to be, based on that, all right? So, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for a vote.
On a motion of Director, Commission Stady, second by Peter Collins, as amended, on salaries. At the agri vocational, I mean, agri, at our Great Agriculture School, as presented. As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John will make the adjustments.
So to clarify, the Director of Student Services, are they getting the proposed rate that Mr. Martin had of, uh, had advanced?
No, yeah, uh, so what happened was, let me say, go back there. So the Director of Student Services. Oh, actually, pretty close, almost. He had recommended six, am I right?
Correct.
And I guess basically. Well. I.
It's.
It's a total of five.
It's a total. I want, I wanted to make the total five.
Right.
Five thousand?
Right.
Yeah. So it's a thousand dollar decrease from what's offered.
Correct. And tha- tha- and that includes the COLA amount.
Oh, no, a decrease or increase?
No, 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 no.
It's going from six to five.
Right.
Yeah, they asked for six, we gave them five.
I have to, do we have to reflect the savings? Uh, down here, the bottom number here.
Saving a thousand dollars.
No, I meant the. Okay, and then that goes in the figures.
Yep, so this, this, according to this number at the bottom, instead of saving sixteen thousand nine forty six, Peter, it would be. Fifteen thousand nine forty six, is that correct?
Yes.
Because you just saved a thousand bucks.
That just goes into the school's reserve. To be used by the school.
Yep. Thanks, guy.
Okay, that vote is, is taken. There are some other suggestions here.
I'm, I'm not clear on that, I'm not trying to be argumental.
Alright, let's go back to what.
Forgive me, forgive me. Maybe, maybe my motion was wrong. I, I thought her. Keep saying her. I thought the position was. The base was one twenty four.
The base is one eighteen.
Oh, okay. That's where my mistake was, okay, thank you.
And then it bumps up.
Okay, thank you.
Five grand instead of six.
I think I put it the wrong call. Thank you. Okay, I'm good. Okay. Alright.
And we took the final vote on school, right, correct?
Yeah, correct, yep.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to approve the?
Operating budget of thirty six million.
Is this yours? Thank you, John.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a joke. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty four operating budget totaling. Thirty six million one hundred and thirty three thousand seven hundred and three dollars.
That reflects everything.
Everything.
You just did.
Yeah.
Alright, second.
Does that reflect everything, John?
It does, yeah.
Okay, is that, that's fine. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Okay, number two, motion to approve the FY twenty four capital plan totaling five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
That's, yeah, right, yeah, second.
Right.
Yeah, second.
All she made and seconded. To approve the fiscal year capital budget. Plan totaling five, nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, all in favor?
No, five hundred and seventy five thousand.
Five seventy five.
Five hundred and seventy five. I'm sorry. Five seventy five. Five seventy five. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the third motion is to take the proposed fiscal year twenty four ARPA budget totaling. Three million one hundred and twenty four thousand dollars under consideration.
For purposes stated in this document.
Correct.
And other.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Great. Um, I hate to do this to you, John, but I'm gonna ask you to, um, revisit the county vote again. Okay. Because as a result of reducing the, um, the spending at the schools. You're gonna reduce their budget by that amount, so if you give me two seconds, I'll give you a revised. Countywide number.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Yeah, so it, you're creating.
I see, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Creating surplus, but. The, the spending is going to be adjusted.
Okay.
Um, that, that was baked into the number you just read, so give me two seconds.
Okay.
Well.
Alright.
Do you want to just take a break for a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna be in a five minute recess until we adjust the budget figures. I don't want to leave the board in an attempt.
Great.
Thank you.
Sam, are you staying?
Yes.
You got a minute after?
Turn it away.
Number fifteen, this is a vote on the, final vote on the county commissioner's budget. We've been adjusting some numbers based on some changes made here today. In open session, and we're gonna go back to Commissioner Collins.
Okay, so, um, so I have made a motion to approve the fiscal year operating budget. And, uh, that didn't account for the changes that we just made to the budget, so I'm gonna, uh, revise that motion. Um, now, actually, I'm, I'm gonna withdraw that motion.
Let's see.
Making up a motion.
And I, I, I make a, I, I, I make a motion to withdraw my prior motion. How about that? We'll start with that.
No, you have to actually vote technically, we voted that.
Yeah.
That passed, so technically, what you wanna do is have a motion to annul that vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to annul that.
Someone on the prevailing side, but that's everyone.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright, so now that, that nulls that vote.
So now I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty four operating budget totaling. Thirty six million one hundred and seventeen thousand. Seven hundred and fifty seven dollars.
And. That number will reflect.
The changes that we made today.
The, okay, hold it, maybe I shouldn't have known that then.
That's okay.
Shoot.
Yeah, we can annul it and, and just redo it.
Yeah, so we reflect, it has to reflect the changes to salary.
Correct.
Yeah, the motion can.
I just cancelled it out.
Well, that's okay, the, the, the motion that Peter just makes can be extended to include, include your intention. To revise the school department budget as previously discussed.
Okay.
He's, he's gonna go do a double check on the.
Okay.
The eight, the big eight.
Alright, alright, that's my motion.
Alright, that's fine.
Okay, so I make that motion.
We all, all set? Do we understand this motion?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Are you seconded?
I second it, yep. Okay, so bottom line is correct, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and it reflects the discussion we had relative to the situation or just things like that, okay?
Yes.
Alright, good.
Okay, motion that I made, seconded, Joe.
Motion made, you're seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Okay.
On the final number. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you for bearing.
We're gonna proceed on schedule.
So if we. Oh, we're still, we're in session.
We're in session.
Okay.
Still going.
Okay.
Uh, we're on item number sixteen, report of the county director.
Let me have, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a few items, um. Okay. Covered a few, um, items already relevant to ARPA, I'll just dive in quickly to give. Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Stady an update. Commissioner Shay and I. Uh, attended a meeting at D-CAM this past Monday, um. The Commissioner D-CAM invited, um, county. Leadership as well as district attorney, Mike Morrissey. Uh, Judge Mark Ovin. Judge Jeffrey Locke, a couple of other justices, Senator Keenan and Representative. Chan, as well as representatives from the town of Quincy, city of Quincy. And other people, it was a well-attended meeting to discuss the Quincy, the new regional justice center, um, plan. Um, there was some consternation regarding D-CAM's. Project planning, uh, relative to the size of that program. Uh, the inclusion of certain elements, which up to now have included district court, family, probate and superior. Um, I guess the thing I learned the most is, it, it now appears that. D-CAM has only sufficient funds to include district, family and probate, but not superior. It would require significant more funding from the state and capital authorization. To achieve a superior court program. Um, the meeting was primarily called because of the district attorney's displeasure with. Some communication from D-CAM and some consternation, as I mentioned, regarding the parking plan. City of Quincy's also been relatively critical of the state's, uh, parking plan. There was a extended dialogue about the inadequacy given the size of this program. Um, I guess at the end of the meeting, which had a hard stop at eleven AM. The general consensus with that, was that more communication with the town, city of Quincy was necessary. To try and determine ways with Homelaw can gain, uh, access to more properties, um, to, uh, expand the property footprint. D-CAM appears to be committed to the site currently, uh, occupied by our Quincy district court. I don't have a sense at this point that they're withdrawing from their offer, um, but I do believe that, um, there's gonna be ex-. Expens- extensive conversations at D-CAM about how to write the program. Uh, going forward and keep on schedule, so. Um, it was a, it was a productive conversation for many, including the district attorney, got a chance to air his grievance. And his concerns about the program. Uh, thought the commissioner was gracious, she listened well, her staff was responsive, prepared, um. But we'll continue to monitor the developments at, um, the state as this particular process goes through. Just a reminder, the commissioners have a meeting on April nineteenth in Quincy. We'll be talking about maybe having a commissioners meeting there as well on that date.
I think we're, almost done, it's next week, it's at that day. Commissioner Stady.
Quick question, is, is it possible based on today's meeting? That if they can't get to the Superior Court, that that could be a deal breaker? Is that?
You know, I don't think so, uh, I don't know if you.
We saw no indication.
Okay.
And, 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 and exiting, everyone was shouting and. I was given, we're still going forward, I mean, it was a neat, a neat position for us to be in.
Yeah.
And, 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 and me as a resident of Quincy, I mean, I want. To go well for everyone and I, I sympathize among the blocking and everything, but we're down the road here and it. I said, I hope this doesn't, and I didn't, no one asked me to speak and I didn't wanna speak.
Hmm.
And they said, no, we're going forward. They, they all kinda said that, and they all reiterate, including Marcy and.
Yes.
Yes, we, we want the court to come to Quincy.
The Superior Court then may remain Superior Court then.
I mean, one may.
Once.
I think everything's gonna be looked at and that's a lot of.
I see.
Things I've been in the back of my mind studying, if any.
Okay, alright, thank you. Well, you were there, that's why it's helpful that. Good, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
No, I did, we did not get the indication that we're in jeopardy, but.
Alright.
I, I, I think I'll ask specifically if.
Yeah.
We are close to April nineteenth.
Yeah.
The mayor, you know.
And we're not meeting with the city council on that day.
No. They all got invited.
We're having a meeting there.
Required by chapter.
Thirty four.
Thirty four, twenty five?
Thirty four, section fourteen, I think.
Fourteen, okay, and, and we're gonna.
Thank you, sir.
And they were required to notify everyone, because I saw. That every council was notified, the mayor was notified, chamber commerce, you know, pub, we published it too. We're on track.
Alright.
And I see no reason to. And we thought it might be unique to maybe have our commissioners meeting here, do right before.
Yeah. All set there?
All set, yeah.
Uh, commissioners, I'm happy to, uh, announce the registry of deeds union contract was ratified, um, Monday evening. Um, the next steps will be to bring the memorandum of agreement before you as early as next week for your ratification on that particular contract. As you know, this is the third and final contract that was up for negotiation. Uh, so we look forward to, uh, closing it out, because earliest next week, we'll. Perhaps have an executive session prior to your meeting with labor council to introduce you to the factors involved with this modified. Or this, uh, new contract and then enter into, uh, regular session for a vote, okay?
Thank you.
Also, next week, uh, you'll be hearing from us on supplemental needs. That'll be presented to the advisory board on April twelfth. I can tell you right now, the list is extraordinarily short. I have three items that I'm tracking and one of them may come off, so. We're looking for only a couple of small supplemental issues or transfers to a deal with year-end closing at this time. Um. Finally. So, uh, this afternoon, you approved, uh, the FY twenty four budget, uh, that I presented. For approval to move into, um, consideration by the advisory board, finance committee and so forth. I'd like to ask Sam if he could come up to the table because something has been emerging for the last year or two. Uh, starting with our assistant treasurer, Joe Doria, there's been. Attempts by outside groups, phishing scandals and so, and so forth to try and, um, dupe users through email into, um. Scams and so forth, and we have reason to believe that some of these bot attacks or, um, phishing attacks could be. Um. Brought forward by the use of names associated with the budget that we publicly present, as the commissioners may know for the years. As you produce a budget and place it on our websites for the world to see as intended. But it includes names.